Okay, for solving the own problem feeding act, we send them across the town. South Jersey Times would notify the screening as well as chase posting this award for being an August 10th, 2018. Race you keep faithful.
Mr. Gattano? Mr. Leo?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here.
Mr. Derek Fallow?
Here.
Mr. Sutery? Mr. Hamels?
Here.
Mr. Felici? Mr. Lycius? Jeremy Greer?
Here.
Okay, in the absence of, uh... Mr. Lycius move, uh, sit our alternate in the air. Okay, so if anybody is here recording the application, Gordon State Armistead LLC, they notified us some point today that they're asking for a postponement of books because there is no liability. Will not be any hearing tonight on that. Uh, they're also asking Mike for a, uh, not to notice.
Correct.
What's our recommendation for that?
Open and force discretion, meaning generally not one month, initiate this more than one month, so within your discretion is the may pack. Make them nice to get.
I think, I think, I was just like, wait, as soon as everybody gets, it might get in July, the August, you know.
The intent is, I'm on August 6th, but you go receive notice again.
Okay. I think if I could, I'd like to, uh, just, uh, need more ads action. Okay, then it should be a previous interview, sure, all good. Okay, but my recall is roughly the all zero, high, close. All right, first on our agenda tonight is P S, then showing what, Q D 24, please come forward, Mike Bobage, sure.
Yes, they are. Good afternoon.
Sure, it's out through about 3:00.
Yes, sir. Name and address. Sean Clark, 1527 Willow Grove Road, Monroe Grove on New Jersey.
Figure.
So I'm trying to build a 50 by 60 pole barn on my property, and I need a variance to do that, just because it exceeds 1200.
It's just. Park fully used?
Yes, strictly personally used, I won't be doing anything commercial there. Um, I have a couple of classic cars, old motorcycles, um, a lot of hobbies, and I need space to do that type of stuff. Um, also need a place for storage, and that's the good reason building, uh, or trying to build a pole barn.
So, it's, uh, like, it was height then, like, the, and there. Well, that's, it's where variance height is all good.
Yeah, the height is just shy of 30 feet, it's, uh, 50 by 60, so the barn itself is 3,000 square feet.
Do you have any, uh, comments?
Um, just, um, the pole barn, the 55 by 60 pole barn that's discussed also has a 12-foot wide lean-to on it, and another eight-foot covered porch on it, so it's 3,728 square feet.
Like that.
That's the size of the entire structure, that's just for clarity, so, uh, the board understands that they're both on, and if approved, doesn't have a problem with zoning and all setbacks combined. Yes, the setbacks are all fine, um, he does need, uh, like you said, so it's 3,728 square feet, 1,200 square feet is the limit for an accessory structure, so that's the first variance, second variance is height, 15 feet is permitted, and if you measure according to the height in the ordinance, he has 22.83 feet, so that's the relief, 15 to 22.83. The 30 feet that he indicated is to the range. Um, so those are the two variances that are along with this. Um, the pole barn has a second floor loft also, uh, according to the plan you submitted.
Yes, yes.
The use of that?
Um, it's just storage.
Um, that's about all, pretty straightforward.
Two examples?
It's almost a five-acre lot.
It's held in the public, or in driven, so, I might. Right, let's follow what you're saying, okay. Okay, all along, see. Okay, thank you very much, that, uh, I could, uh... Make the motion that G4406, uh, into, like, it's 5 minutes, not to buy it, all the same, yeah, with it, okay, go to the, oh, and be, be, then, like, okay.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garfow?
Yes.
Mr. Howl?
Yes.
Chairman Greer?
Yes.
Okay, well, yeah, bro.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is C24, 1-0, name it ARCR Home Builders LLC. Yes, he's, he's here, everybody, I have an updated variance plan, he's trying, if you don't have, well, fucking thing, he's out, um, it's just slightly different, more winding up. There, it's supposed to, uh, you should see that.
Oh, I just want to clarify, there are no, there are no substantive changes to this, to the plan, um, we're just, we just made it a, uh, we're just giving a larger copy of, and it's a variance plan as opposed to the original, uh, it's, yeah, same, the same layout.
They did state it today, so.
It is dated.
Market as A1 is dated.
That's right, thank you. All right, on the Duke's government behind you, going to testify?
Uh, yes, sir. I'm sorry?
Just read that minute.
Oh, absolutely.
A voltage, raise raising, you sure to tell a group about Tesla, we're gonna.
Good job.
Name and address.
Kyle Denny, base of maintenance plus, heel box 120 Franklinville, New Jersey.
Rich Rosenberg, 2001 College Jobs, we back teen Clementon, New Jersey, A R C R.
Good evening, my name is Scott Good, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Cooper Levinson. Uh, I'm here to present the application of A R C R Home Builders for variance relief with respect to minimum lot frontage at 2023 Sheridan Avenue, and this is block 802, 2301 on the tax map of Franklin Township. The, the existing property, as you see, is a, it's a flag lot which was created by a subdivision of the planning, of the planning board in, in around May 14th of 1985. Upon, if this board approves the application by a client, A R C R Properties or Home Builders would be seeking to construct a two-story residential property on, on the parcel. The, the property is located in the RA Residential Agricultural Zoning District, where a single-family residential dwelling is permitted use, and as you know, we have two, two witnesses and maybe three, based on the questions of the engineer and the attorney, um, to testify tonight. Um, so I'm just going to ask Mr. Kyle Denny, who is a professional engineer, if he can provide some information regarding the plan, the variance application works.
Sure, and as far as being qualified to present in front of the board previously for variance applications, um, what's that?
It's your that.
It is about two months.
Yeah.
It's for, yeah. Mr. Panardo's garage. So, as Mr. Good stated, it's 2323 Sheridan Ave, block 802, 2301, uh, we are seeking a variance for required lot frontage, because only 30 feet is provided, whereas 150 feet is required, uh, all other criteria on the property is met. Uh, support for the variance is provided under C1 hardship, since there's no room to expand property, since both adjacent, uh, properties are currently developed, and it would actually reduce to the adjacent ones, the low standards. But also with C2, there are, you know, substantial detriment to the public good, does not substantially impair the intent, purpose of the zoning ordinance. Forty-three percent of the lots on this block are non-conforming in respect to area and frontage, uh, as I stated, would just request thingy variance for lot frontage. Uh, two of the lots on that block have the same or less frontage than the property in question. Uh, additionally, the positive criteria is that, uh, appropriate use development of land in township, um, he is population densities that are, um, reflective of the environment, and then geez sufficient space for development, as I indicated, all setbacks are required. And, uh, everything else, Matt.
What, I mean, it's a flag lot, what, what was that period?
1985, based on the D U T, previous subdivision plans.
Was it a, a pool lot in 1985?
Yes.
This, this subdivision was, this lot was created by a sub, minor subdivision application which was approved, the resolution approving that subdivision was, uh, submitted as part of our application package along with the subdivision plan. Um, inexplicably, at that time, there, the resolution did not address the variant, uh, a variance for lot frontage, which is, created the need for us to be here, because it just wasn't addressed in the documentation from 1985.
Who's, uh, going to go right behind you, like, well?
Oh, that's correct, that adjacent lot behind, it's identical, it's 30 feet frontage, very similar in area, it's, it's developed, yes. So when we submitted for the zoning permits, we were denied, but we had to come for the variance.
They submitted a copy of the file subdivision plan that was approved by our planning board that clearly shows that 30 feet was the width of the supply. So, this is in the RA zoning district, um, what Mr. Denny has indicated, and as Good has indicated, it meets all other criteria for the zone, lots 3.8 acres in size, you only need a acre and a half, setbacks are all good, um, height is good, everything's good except for this non-conforming lot width, 30 feet versus 150 feet. It did receive planning board approval previously, so, um, there's site access, the driveway's going to be about 430 feet long, the plant should identify the construction of the driveway, and the driveway should be able to support emergency access vehicles. I had a question, if you look at the tax map, it says this lot, says Highcliff Township Exept, it's an old lot by Franklin Township, also has a drainage easement that goes up to it, and I was looking for some history as how it became no longer a Franklin Township Exept lot.
And, and we can provide testimony on that term, Jason Brant, who's the owner of the property, if you'd like to.
Oh, and he's. I did, Jason, Jason Brant, 688 Rosemont Avenue, um, if I could just hand this to, uh, Mr. Shoddy, this is a copy of your. Property?
Yes.
Um, it was purchased at a, uh, an auction, the township had, uh, properties that they acquired through, uh, N R M tax foreclosure, uh, that was, that was past August, I do know you have a question about the easement, uh, to the, I guess, I would view to the west, or the east. Um, I could tell you that, I could tell you that I've thoroughly reviewed the title report, both from my title company, as well as, uh, Mr. Rosenberg's title company, and there's nothing in the report, uh, that addresses, um, any encumbrances on the property in question here this evening, so I can give you the hearsay information that I've heard from various people regarding that drainage easement, if you'd like, uh, just for your own knowledge.
I'd like to know it.
Uh, from what I understand, uh, across the street from this, this parcel, uh, there was a development, Peachtree Drive, it was done sometime around, uh, you know, the early 2000s, maybe around the financial crisis, um, there's a basin that exists, uh, towards the Sheridan side of that development on Peachtree, um, from what I understand, there have been some issues with that drainage basin coming back many years, and at one point or another, that developer, Richmond American Homes, secured an easement on that adjacent property to the one we're speaking of, in order to run an overflow, uh, pipe from the basin on Peachtree across Sheridan Avenue, through that drainage easement, and then it turns and heads to the west, and the outlet is on Stanton Avenue, so that overflow would dissipate onto the farm field on the eastern side of Stanton Avenue, is what I've been told, I can't verify any of that information, I would assume the township would have all that documentation, so, but I can attest that there's no easements that affect the property in question here this evening, so. Except for, there's, except. Obviously, yeah, the P S E N G, not, not relative to that drainage. Project on Peachtree. But, you, there's some heavy print, that's how they, Eric. Right, and actually, since, since I guess that, that easing was put into place, I understand from one of the prior property owners, that there was actually a subdivision, I didn't look at the tax map that you had, but there's, there was a subdivision done in conjunction with the granting of that easement, and there's, there's two acre and a half lots, they're, they're front on Sheridan Avenue, um, that were sold and developed, uh, I know the owners of one of the properties in the audience, and they had developed the other property, and since sold that, uh, um, I'm assuming all the documentation, if you want research on the drainage easement would be included with that subdivision, but I haven't gone that far. And there's nothing listed on the deed as provided, any conditions or any encumbrances against this property we're speaking about this evening? Definitely that explains or provides an explanation.
Should we mark that as, uh, A2? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Gattano. And I just wanted to have, um, uh, Mr. Rosenberg, just to give briefly, tell the
board a little bit about the experience, what he's been doing in, um, in the area, and what he's looking to do at this.
We're building three other houses on King's Court. We're building three other houses on King's Court, and working on another subdivision now, and about 50 houses a year, usually 90 days after the shovel goes in, is that it again?
Where are you building three other houses?
On King's Court.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Yeah, we just got, C and B just finished everything, I bought the lots, you used to market.
Oh, okay.
So, and the, the type of the structure you're going to be building?
Twenty-seven hundred square foot, two-story home, double garage.
How many bedrooms, how many beds?
Four beds, only half-bath and a basement.
I, I don't think we have anything else to, to add it, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
You have to have this, regarding the letters.
Oh, I'm sorry, um, I believe that there, there was a, we did send a, and I can, that could, was because I sent the letter, but, uh, we did send a, a letter to the, to the property owner, uh, in front of this lot on Sheridan Avenue, to inquire whether they would be interested in selling the property, um, the certified mail came back, is received, and we have not received any response from, from that property owner, I believe it's Anne Marie Keen. So as far as we can, as far as we can tell, that there, there's no additional way, no, no way for us to obtain additional frontage, uh, at least along Sheridan Avenue.
Your constant agreement with, including the driveway as a search for the burden is good.
Yeah, we're going to, uh, improve with a by tune this driveway, and I believe the requirement, if we obtain approval, is to get plot grading and drainage plan approval from C and B associates, so my question would be, is could we address that with the township engineer, and it gated on those development plans, as opposed to re-revising the variance plan every submit?
And you should address it to her.
Okay.
Yes.
Understood, okay.
You have it? To bring it to your.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Correct, understood, yeah, we can, we can work with board engineer to, to address that comment with the driveway.
Thank you. And your reflection, this number, uh, is, uh, I think that, uh, it's a motion, it's a, it's a, like, uh, for all the, uh, I, 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 he, he, he might as well, if he party, the schmaddick, his application, G D, four to one trust. That, being watching, also, worship, comes, second, one, five, also, the others, and all, able, I, I, oh, yes.
Thank you.
Like, well, like, they haven't voted yet. It's actually, actually, it was fascinating, I guess, you, she's, what's your, uh, what do you call it? The numbers we, like, uh, so, first you write, who's, uh, yeah, make the motion, bro, T P, two, four, one, six, second.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garfow?
Yes.
Mr. Van Leef?
Yes.
Chairman Greer?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you. And the, we're set to reach a while, ready to, as it says, and obviously, that's the good, that, here, wife, definitely, but, I, 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 could say, you, you, I would see, 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 now, and says, it'll be washed.
We're back again, same thing.
All right. That's really. I'm going to recuse myself as a, as a, uh, awesome, no, people. My first notch, very, very much. Um, all right, so next on the agenda, C V 2411, John Gravener. Thank you, thank you. Raise your right hand. I do, John Gravener, 246 Maria Court, Malaga, New Jersey. Okay, all right, papers in order, Mike, please. Turn it over to you. Okay, so what I, duplicating one of the applications, I want to build a pole barn on my property, about 3,000 square feet, it's 64 by, uh, 48, to store my classic cars, and that's it. And I had to consolidate a lot, if you look at the, if you look at the plan, you can see, what's it, three, how many acres is it?
3.7.
3.7 acres. I was, uh, the, uh, the, uh, yes, thank you, but, thank you, Chairman and Board members, um, we did a report May 14th, this is in the, um, like you said, like, like the applicant is indicating, um, this is an application for a private pole barn, 3,072 square feet, uh, various leases required for the garage area, 1,200 square foot is permitted, 3,072 is requested, there's also variance relief for, um, height, the maximum permitted in zone is 15 feet, and it, we have proposed 20 feet. Um, there is also, uh, one additional variance to do with this application, uh, our ordinance says you cannot have an accessory structure in your front yard set, like between your house and, and, this is an interesting lot, in that it has frontage on three streets, not just two, such as a corner by, so it's got frontage on Maria Court, it also has frontage on Chestnut Street and Washington Street, so the frontage that I'm talking about is Washington Street, um, that is required, this variance. Now, Washington Street is an unimproved road, wouldn't know it's there, but it's actually municipal ride way, so further variance is required, because that pole barn is in, technically in the front yard setback of Washington. But I own all the land past that street, Washington. On the other side of Washington? Yes. So there is a possibility someday that would be taken? Hopefully, they, yes, we'd like that. So at this point in time, technically, there's a variance for a structure in a front yard set, so if this would be approved, that should be included in the, so, lot area, building height, and an accessory structure in a front yard setback, three variances for specification. We left it, no. Listen, no, no, right, we exceed, we exceed lot, right, college. We've walked it by the. Good, all right, thank you, I guess, um, I want to just, the, we were, second, anyone from the public, like, you hear heard on TV, 2411, John Gravener? You thought that? I just have the question of ability, did I see ID? Yeah. So, from the fullness, and it's good, this, second, second, right? We did, uh, go palace, I mean, look, so, that, roll call? I want to, oh, I want to, sorry, get it. Do you feel sure you're, in the application now? Yeah. Okay, still getting motion to the side, all right, motion, with the motion, here, there, other ones, you're, so, a second, obviously, roll call, and.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Ketchum?
Yes.
Mr. Garfow?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. Yes, that's it from B C L C D, that is tonight, it's great, regulations.
Yeah. First one is Z B 230, waiting, okay, LLC, also try, these guys, away from, say, near the shore, to be able to, activities, this was mine, now, I didn't.
You can't do this, unless you pull it, do it, usually, you can do a message, it's approved, if you, unless approved, right?
Action.
Okay, we can do it all at once.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, uh, the next one is C V 2 Woods Yar tree, Dennis and Vincent Traversio, that's their, what I have, they have a variance for construction, a, a, a dwelling on the lot with 139 feet of frontage, where a hundred and fifty feet is required, this was, here's the subjective conditions. We next go on, the fee is C V 2404, here in Salerno, that's 67 with Nelsie Drive, old Nelsie Drive, and 349 Nelsie Drive, and use variance to construct the self-storage facility, this was denied. The next application is N B 2405, 50 after, 199 Blackwood Avenue, and the variance to construct, a, a, three, three, a dwelling on a lot with less than the area frontage required in the zone, approval was granted, subjective conditions. The final application is Z B 2409, proceed in the bottom, rise no room, variance to construct a single-family home with a lot less to furniture required in the zone, this was also granted, subjective condition, they all, the legislation.
It was in, all, all the residents, let them look, so, so.
Feels like catching this. All the fish.
Oh, the sucker gender.
No, there isn't something else. I also have no correspondence.
You can always switch to a charge. I'm like, please, uh. All. Got you. Alright, thank you, everyone. John, I see this rapper.